Andrew, uh, Mayor Riden?
Here.
Sarah Hall?
Here.
Andrew Boger?
Here.
Brian Callahan?
Here.
Brianna Higgins?
Here.
Kathleen Shaw?
Here.
And Juliet Walker?
Present.
Great. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll now turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
All right, before we begin public comment, just a few reminders. Please keep to topics within the school committee's scope of authority. We encourage civility, be mindful of the fact that this is a public meeting which is being livestreamed and recorded for all ages in our community. Please be aware that this is not an opportunity for discussion and you will not receive a response at this time. You will have two minutes for your comment. Longer comments can be sent to the school committee via email. And first, we have Kristin Farrell. You can come on up to the mic, please. You just need to state your name and address and then you'll have your two minutes. I know, just see, you can tip it down a little bit. See if you can tip it down a little.
No, I kind of can't see you.
Yeah.
It's my whole life problems.
Oh, looks good.
Kristin Farrell, 28 Swalkford Street. Thank you, everyone. I wanted to come and speak. I saw the agenda for today about the transportation updates and was interested in speaking to you all about that. Our current accessibility perspective for transportation in the school district is through the form of little buses, smaller buses that are equipped with wheelchair lifts and/or vans, accessible vans. As new bids are solicited and the transportation overall perspective for our district is considered, I would like you to think about from the perspective of the students with disabilities who would utilize wheelchair transportation and the use of those little buses. My hope is that there would be improvement of accessible transport in the form of a full-size bus in the fleet that does have a wheelchair access ramp. If you think about yourself as a middle schooler attending a school field trip and using a wheelchair or some other form of mobility equipment and having you and, you know, five or six or however many fit in that smaller bus entering that van and the rest of the students entering a larger van, it's equal but not the same. It's still separate. Think of it from the perspective of a high school team player who's attending a team event, maybe not as a field player, but maybe as the soccer team manager or the lacrosse team coaching assistant. Having to foresee getting on a smaller bus without your team is kind of a bummer. So just thinking in terms of those kinds of things, again, it's 2024. It seems like a big bus with a wheelchair lift wouldn't be such a heavy lift from a production standpoint or from an availability standpoint. I would also like to ask that even understanding that there are global staffing shortages in every aspect of industry, that somehow the transportation bid includes contractual obligations to consider accessible equipment maintenance in their fleets? And that's from a parent...
That's a...
Okay, that's... Maintenance for accessible equipment and also from the perspective of disability awareness and education for fleet, for the fleet managers and the people who manage all of the transportation. So there's just lastly that we do have really great resources here in Newburyport. We're really lucky to have a lot of inclusion initiatives, the Commission on Disabilities, and the newly being rebuilt CPAC. And I would encourage all of those being tapped into considering these kinds of considerations. So, thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, we'll move on to recognitions.
All right. All right. Well, first of all, thank you very much. As we said, this is the fun part of our meeting where we get to recognize students and staff and the students and staff tonight that we're recognizing doing incredible work and incredible feats. And I'm excited to explain it and then I'll have Ms. Ledbeater come up and kind of give a little bit more detail. But tonight, we'll be recognizing seven members of our high school real-world design challenge team. They're being recognized for recently winning the state real-world design competition and advancing to the national championship to represent Massachusetts. So they deserve a round of applause just for that. This year's challenge was for them to design a UAV, which is an unmanned aerial vehicle capable of assisting with wildfire management. The team members that we're recognizing today, and I'll just have you come on up as I call your name, Bowden Gay, Parker Harding, Ben Healy, Tommy Lynch, Chris Rowland, Seda Schumacher, and Will Tomowski. And led by technology teacher extraordinaire, you all recall. Now, this is her off-season to win this championship, the sale bot's coming up. But Ms. Sarah Ledbeater is a phenomenal educator. I call her the Bill Belichick of technology because not only do we win state championships, national championships, but the recognition that you deserve is extraordinary. And then, you know, this is my sixth year and students after students graduating just do amazing things under your leadership. So I'd like to have you kind of give a synopsis of all the hard work that these students have done behind us. There you go.
So this year's challenge was for wildfire mitigation. Basically, they were asked to design a small aircraft that could be hiked in to the wilderness, assembled, and then sent up and able to do variety of missions. So prior to a fire, it could look for vegetation and areas that are expected with like drought and that would probably be a problem. During a fire, it can monitor the fire edge to see how it's spreading. After a fire, you can look for hotspots and, you know, so there's a variety of sensors and technology on this thing that needs to be able to be compressed down to be hiked in and to be able to transmit that information. I know nothing about this project. These are the guys who actually know how this thing works. And I read it and I don't know how that happened because I don't understand half of it. So really, they're the ones you should be asking all the questions to.
And we have certificates for all of our students and then also Ms. Ledbeater. I'll take a team photo up here. So let's all get together.
You'll have to huddle this time.
Yeah. This is a real-world problem, how to get everyone in the picture. See, never ends. We're going to be facing this way. Can you get us all, Ms. Rowland?
The mayor can take one step again. Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone. Awesome job. Great job. Awesome job, as always. All right.
They're going to stick around.
Andy. Yeah, we'll have them stay around? Okay, awesome. There we go. They're working on their next project right now. All right. Our next part of our introduction or recognition, it's really an introduction. And once again, I'd just like to thank Ms. Keely for all the hard work and our interview process for the Director of People Services. And tonight, we're introducing Mr. Bradley Brooks. Just some relevant certifications and licensures. Mr. Brooks has a Superintendent Assistant Superintendent licensure, also an Administrator for Special Education for All Levels, Principal Assistant Principal, grades nine to 12, Teacher, licensure for intensive special needs at all levels, and Teacher for Elementary Education at all levels. Mr. Brooks has 29 years of educational experience, beginning in 1994 as an assistant teacher and through the years has worked as a teacher, a lead teacher, team facilitator, collaborative program director, and Director of Student Services for a total of 18 years in the director position. He's worked at the Concord Area Special Education Collaborative, the Merrimack Special Education Collaborative, Chumstead Public Schools, and North Middlesex Regional School District where he currently is working. Mr. Brooks experiences provide him with a strong understanding of academic vocational social and life skills programs. By championing Special Olympics, building specialized in-house programs, addressing students' mental health needs, and establishing a thriving integrated preschool, Mr. Brooks has shown commitment to creating a sense of community for among children, educators, parents, and guardians. Mr. Brooks comes to Newburyport with an extensive experience with technical and operational challenges of special education. We're excited about his ideas for budget management, policy development, staff retention, and grant management. He is well-positioned to build on the strength of the Newburyport Public Schools' special education programs and address any identified concerns. So welcome to the team, Mr. Bradley Brooks. You might have to turn this up, yeah.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Gallagher. I just wanted to, I thank the committee and the school administration for the rigor in which they did this search because it allowed me actually, in my several times to come back, to learn a lot more about the district. And every subsequent time that I came back, I really, really enjoyed what I was seeing and hearing and learning about. And so was thrilled to get the call and that I was a finalist and was very thrilled to hear that, you know, I was, you know, voted on to become the new Student Services Director. So can't wait till, well, I can't wait because I don't want to wish away the rest of the school year, but I'm looking forward to July. Deb O'Connor and I worked together previously when I was at the collaborative. So she and I kind of, special education directors run in small circles and so we knew each other. And so she and I are going to begin transitioning actually tomorrow. We're having a phone call tomorrow afternoon. And I'll begin to set some times to come up to the district and spend some more times in the school and get to know people a little bit so that I can hit the ground running in July, so. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now take a brief recess. All right, we're going to continue our meeting with the consent agenda. Mr. Callahan, are you ready with the warrants?
I am ready. Are you ready?
Yes.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $777,578.58 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment, there are no conflicts. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first one is from our business meeting on January 16th. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Go ahead.
They're very minor. So the first one is just on page three of the minutes. Under the Communications Subcommittee Proposal, the second bullet, it says, towards the end of that sentence, it says, "Get decisions around the budget." I don't want to communicate that we're somehow involved with getting decisions around the budget. So I think it might have been like maybe facilitate discussions around the budget or something. Rather than get decisions around the budget. And then on that same page, I think. It's just, this is just a wording thing. Undervoted to establish a Communications Subcommittee, the last line, it says, "To be undertaking" at the end of the year, it should just be undertaken at the end of the year. Minor, minor.
Okay, anything else? Is that all set, Ms. Yell? Is that good? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the January 16th minutes?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes from the special meeting on January 25th. Any corrections? All right, can I get a motion to approve the January 25th minutes?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So unfortunately, we have no student rep tonight, so no student rep report. And we'll move right on to the Statement of Interest submissions. Are you going to introduce that?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Steve Burcom for all his hard work. And he'll come up and be presenting this a little bit more detail. But Steve's knowledge regarding the MSBA process, and once the program opened up, Steve was ready to submit the MSBA Statement of Interest for the roof projects for the high school and also the Knok Molen School. MSBA reopened their accelerated roof repair program and Steve completed the application process. So as for, to make people familiar, the MSBA Statement of Interest document is just a justification of why we want to proceed with these roof projects. And then I'll let Mr. Steve Burcom provide the committee with a little bit more details of the project. So here he is, the one and only, Mr. Steve Burcom.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. So. Statement of interest is basically just our signal to the MSBA that we want to partner with them on a project of some sort. They have two different programs. One is called the Core Program, which is for bigger projects such as renovations or new construction. But the program that we're looking at is called the Accelerated Repair Program. And that is specifically for roof and window replacement. So to qualify for that program, a roof has to be at least 25 years of age or older. And we've got a few sections of roof that meet that qualification. So the original part of the high school, what we call Building A, the part that was built 1937, that roof was last replaced in 1995. And then down at the middle school, the auditorium, gym, and the front entrance canopy were also replaced in 1995 as part of a district-wide roof replacement project that happened. All the other roofs on those two buildings are somewhat newer. The roof that's on the addition of the high school doesn't quite make it into the qualifications to be able to be replaced at this time. That's got a few more years before we can go after that one. So what we're looking for tonight is simply just a vote to allow the superintendent to submit the Statement of Interest to the MSBA. It's a requirement of the MSBA that it be, the submission be approved by both the school committee and the city council. So the city council has already seen it as well and will be voting on it sometime in the next month or so. The high school roof, this winter has been pretty tough with some of those rainstorms that we had in January. We were scrambling to keep things high and dry there. We had a roofer in a number of times at the high school. Also down the middle school, we've had some issues in the, on the stage and in the gym. So it's time to get these roofs replaced. And this is, I think, the best way forward is partnering with the MSBA so they'll pick up at least part of the cost of doing those projects. So that's really as simply as I can put it. Any questions?
Can you tell us a little bit about the timeline moving forward? If we submit now, when we might hear?
Yep, yep. So the deadline to submit is March 1st. And between March and June, the MSBA staff review all of the submissions that come into them. And they try to prioritize them. They just, they make sure that, well, first they start by making sure that the submissions are complete, that we did, you know, crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is and everybody signed where they're supposed to sign. So, you know, we need to be really careful about getting everything exactly right so that we don't get rejected on a technicality. And then between July and September, they do what they call their due diligence. They'll come out to sites and look things over, look at the roofs, talk to staff, and, you know, further prioritize one town over the next. So, you know, last year, there was not, they did not have this program open last year. They had shut it down for a year to kind of reorganize a little bit. So there's probably a bit of a backlog. But there's also some additional funding this year, so hopefully that will make sure that we get into the program. They anticipate inviting districts in in October. So that's the timeframe that we would hope to hear. Then there's a couple months of just all the documentation that we have to go through with them. They've got all kinds of rules and regulations that we have to agree to, that we're going to play by their rules. So the deadline to submit is March 1st, and between March and June, the MSBA staff review all of the submissions that come into them, and they try to prioritize them. They just, they make sure that, well, first they start by making sure that the submissions are complete, that we did, you know, crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is, and everybody signed where they're supposed to sign. So, you know, we need to be really careful about getting everything exactly right so that we don't get rejected on a technicality. And then between July and September, they do what they call their due diligence. They'll come out to sites and look things over, look at the roofs, talk to staff, and, and, you know, further prioritize one town over the next. So, you know, last year, there was not, they did not have this program open last year. They had shut it down for a year to kind of reorganize a little bit, so there's probably a bit of a backlog, but there's also some additional funding this year, so hopefully that will make sure that, that we get into the program. They anticipate inviting districts in, in October, so that's the timeframe that we would hope to hear. Then there's a couple months of just all the documentation that we have to go through with them. They've got all kinds of rules and regulations that we have to agree to, that we're going to play by their rules, and that takes a while. And then in January of next year, they would assign the consultants to us, consultants being an owner's project manager and the design team or design firm that we would be working with. Then you go through the design process, and you're probably actually looking at the summer of 2026 before the roof is actually replaced.
Our last submission, but it wasn't under the accelerated repair program, right? We put this under our part when we were going to look at the science labs addition. So do they take that into consideration since that's been put in? Are you really just starting from scratch after this kind of restart of the accelerated?
Well, I think it helps because they're familiar with the building. They came out and visited at that time.
Yep.
But they're really just comparing us to everybody else, you know, what the conditions are at this point in time.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Could you just speak to, worst case scenario, how, how long do these roofs have?
I would say, I would say that, you know, if, if we did not get accepted in this year, I think the city should seriously consider going at this on our own, particularly for the high school. The problems with the high school keep popping up. So I would say within three to five years, you want to have both of those roofs replaced.
Thank you.
We are prioritizing the high school roof, correct? Wasn't there something about they'll only consider one at a time?
Yes, well, you have to, you have to, you have to designate one of your statements of interest as the priority statement of interest.
Got it.
We did that with the high school, correct?
Are there any other questions? All right, so I understand I have to read the whole thing, right? Fair enough. I mean, if it works, then it'll be worth it, right? So I have to, I guess it doesn't really matter which one I start with. Maybe I'll start with NOC because it's listed first on the agenda. I'm just trying to see which, I can't even see which one is which. Can you see that in here? No, oh, this is, that's the high school one. This is the NOC one, okay. So bear with me, please, it's like a full page that I need, need to read. This is basically a very lengthy motion. If you want to have a seat, maybe just sit right. If you, I'm saying, if you would like to sit down, then you can be available if any questions arise. All right, having convened in an open meeting on February 5th, 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Newburyport, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, is voting to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated January 23rd, 2024, for the Rupert A. NOC Middle School located at 70 Low Street, Newburyport, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. A new roof will prevent damage and provide protection for these sections of the NOC Mullen School building for the next 25 to 30 years. This in turn will free up both manpower and financial resources that are now being used on roof-related issues to be allocated to other issues throughout the facility. A new roof would also likely provide an improved insulating R-value for the roof, saving on energy costs. It will also provide a safer and healthier school environment for staff and students. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Newburyport Public Schools to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And now I need a second.
Oh, okay.
Discussion.
Did you move? Okay, I thought it was just reading, you were just reading the statement of interest.
Well, it says is voting to.
Got it.
It's in there. So is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Was that okay, Steve? All right, now I need to do it again. All right. So, would you like to read it?
I mean, I will, I'll do it if you don't want to do it.
I don't, I don't mind. I'll read, I'll just take some warrants, I'll do it again. Okay. So this is basically the same thing, but now it's for the high school. Having convened in an open meeting on February 5th, 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Newburyport, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, is voting to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated 20, uh, January 23, 2024, for Newburyport High School located at 241 High Street, Newburyport, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. A new roof will prevent further damage to the building and provide protection for these sections of the building for the next 25 to 30 years. This in turn will free up both manpower and financial resources that are now being used on roof-related issues to be allocated to other issues throughout the facility. A new roof would also likely provide an improved insulating R-value for the roof, saving on energy costs. It will also provide a safer and healthier school environment for staff and students. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Newburyport Public Schools to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we'll get those signatures for you. Do you need to take those with you now, or? Or can we get them to you later? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
So let's see, next we have the transportation bid update.
All right, I want to call Mr. Little Hale. He's doing a lot of work on this for the past two months and kind of let you all know kind of where we're at.
Thank you. As the superintendent said, we've been working on it. We're pretty much almost done with it. We're doing one or two more passes through to make sure that we've got everything in there. I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. We're planning to go out with a three-year bid with two one-year extensions on it, so that would be a total of a five-year contract. The longer the contract we go with, hopefully the better the pricing we can get, because you know busing is a capital-intensive industry. We are not specifically asking for electric buses because we're working with the city right now on getting a grant from the state and federal governments for electric buses, working, doing that in conjunction with Beacon, which is the holding company for Salter, and so we've been working on that since December, and I believe we pretty much finished up the paperwork on that today. Because if we had gone into the bid itself and specified a certain amount of electric buses, electric buses cost about three times as much as a diesel bus, so it would really drive up the costs on the contract. And I didn't bring my glasses, and I got to try to read my own notes here. The three-year extensions, one of the things we are going to put in, and this has been one of my sources of frustration, is a requirement that there be some sort of real-time, some ability to have real-time monitoring of where the buses are. You know, this day and age, it's not a, a big ask of bus companies being able to give something to the parents or to the administration of where, where are the buses right now? When I was in Salem 10 years ago, we had that, and so we're putting, we currently don't have that with Salter, so getting, we're trying to approve the communications to the parents when there's any delays or things like that. So that will be a requirement within the bus contract as well. We're also, we're having the contract the ability to decrease or increase the number of buses that we need. I've had several conversations with Salter, and again, don't know who's going to get the contract, but with our current bidder, working on trying to look at the number of routes that we currently have, 13 is an awful lot of routes for 1,100 students. One of the pieces of feedback that I did get from Salter is the bell times make it difficult to be able to utilize the buses for three tiers. We got about 10 or 15-minute problem in terms of some of the bell times, so I think we need to do a little investigation in that. Oh, and also the bid, we will also include as part of the bid, pricing for both athletics and field trips as well. So again, if, the theory is the more that we can get a bidder to bid on, the better the pricing hopefully will be, so. And I will also make sure that everyone understands this is for regular transportation. This is not special ed transportation. Special ed transportation is a whole different world that we live in. So that's the update we have on that. I am hoping to get this out, if not by next Wednesday or the following Wednesday, and going to give them three weeks to respond. That should be more than enough time, so we should have the responses back by first week of March, and then we'll, and since it's a straight bid, you open up the bids and see who the low price is, and if they're a qualified bidder, you award the contract. And then if that is the case, I'll come back with my recommendation to the committee for your vote to approve it. You also will need to approve the fact that it's a, a three-year with a two-one-year extension because it exceeds three years. So that's where we are. And if any of you folks have any feedback or things you want to make certain we have in the RFP, and it's not an RFP, I'm sorry, IFB, please let me know as soon as you can. Just want to make sure we got it.
You go.
Just in light of our public comment, is there a way to ask for a requirement that at least one of the buses is handicap accessible?
I've already made a note of that to find out what we can do. I was just checking, in our current contract, that is not a requirement, it was not in the bid documents, but in our previous one, there was a requirement for a 21-passenger bus with a wheelchair, so I'll have some discussions with our current vendor as well, and I'll talk with the superintendent about how we want to award that in the RFP.
Thank you.
I was going to ask that same question, but I figured you were too, so.
But I have another one, I have two.
Good. Were you going to say we should probably go some earlier start times to?
Yes, definitely start school earlier. That is kind of, I'm curious about that because I'm pretty sure we didn't add routes when we changed the start times. We kept them the same, so that means their, their timing answer is not even real because they were a half an hour difference before.
Right. No, I think it's probably, you know, we can always follow up to get some clarity on, on, you know, that.
But I will refer you back to a graph that I gave the committee a year, year and a half ago that showed the history of the last 20 years of the number of buses that we had, and prior to about eight or so years ago, we didn't have 13, we had nine. So what changed?
Right, because that started five years ago, right? So they added more in that three-year gap.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I'm just looking at the history, you know, we jumped back up, we jumped back to 13, and that was the highest that we've ever had. It was 11, then I think it dropped to nine, and then it went to 13.
Okay, my question was going to be, what was the answer from Salter when you asked them about why they don't have a GPS type of system if it's been so commonplace for a decade?
I didn't get a good answer. I mean, they, they had one, but then because Beacon was buying everybody out, Beacon is now rolling out, they're trying to roll out one that's consistent across all of their subsidiaries, and I've been told that that should be becoming available before the school year ends. So they were, they were beta testing with, with several districts, and at the time I asked, "What could you include us?", but it was too late, they'd already started the testing. But yes, I, I am surprised that, you know, Salter didn't, doesn't have it, and so it is, it's something that from my perspective, I like to have, I want to know where the buses are. I don't want to have to pick up the phone, call down, see the bus company, say, "Where's your bus?", and then, you know, use the radio to try to find it, you know? That's what we did 25 years ago. So those are my personal opinions.
Sure. Thanks.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Little Hale. I just clarification on the electric buses, so our, we're negotiating, or not, we're applying for a grant in collaboration with our current vendor.
The city is, what is, what is her name at City Hall?
Yeah, Molly Attenberg.
Thank you, yeah, Molly is taking the lead on that. So yes, we are doing that in collaboration with our current vendor.
Okay, so what would that mean for us, Mayor? I don't know if you know the answer to that. What would that mean for us if we don't happen to go with this vendor?
Well, if we don't go with that vendor, the vendor owns the buses because they're the ones who are going for it.
So we're kind, the city realizes we're at risk, that we, we might help a company apply for electric buses that we won't actually get to use?
Right, and it wouldn't be on the city as far as cost, I mean, we're just working with them together.
But staff time to do the?
Sure, that's fine, no, this is important, so I mean, this is something Molly's been working on in a lot of different areas, so.
Okay.
And if it turns out that our current vendor remains our vendor and they do get the buses, then there is a requirement that if we get awarded two buses, those buses have to be used for our routes.
Yeah, do you happen to know, and maybe this is a detail I can follow up with the staff, but do you happen to know where those buses would be charged? Are they doing a?
They'd all be up the street.
So they're getting, the part of the grant is probably installed?
There's a, there's a second grant from that, as well as money from the electric companies to do some of the infrastructure costs. We don't want to have, we don't want to start putting infrastructure down here.
Right. I have one more question, related to the GPS, and Salter may already have, or the current vendor may already have this, but routing software, ability to do routing?
They do have, they do have the software.
Okay, and do most companies have that?
Yes.
So is that just assumed in the bid, or do we need to?
I believe it is, it is specified in the bid that they're required to do the routing, whether they do it by software or, as my transportation manager used to do in Salem, he did it with the postcards, index cards.
Okay, I would, I would just ask if you could maybe look?
They have the software.
Yeah, or whether it's important to include that in the bid, because personally, I think
Well, it is.
They should have it.
Yes, I agree.
I feel like it would, it's, it gives us the ability to be a little more collaborative, and if we, if we ask to do a routing change, that it's not a major undertaking on their part, and they can easily show us what that would, how that would impact.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Though I did have one question for the mayor.
Great.
Does the city have GIS?
Yes.
It does.
It does, yeah.
So do we have the ability then to map the addresses of all the students?
Sure.
Okay, because one of the things I want to get is, I want to have that as the bible for distances, because then we can publish the distances for every street or whatever the case may be, because right now we have the, we have the battle of, I use MapQuest and you use Google Maps, and you, if it's a tenth of a mile, we get into those things. I'd like to have that come from the GIS system saying, "Here's what it is."
Sure, you can, you can work with the planning office to do that.
Okay, thank you, it wasn't worth it. Oh, it's.
That's great, Phil, thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Bringing our school into the modern age.
I thought you were going to say it was more like you were doing it not with index cards, but with maps and like Taka trucks.
I spent many a summer day dealing with index cards, driving my car on routes in Salem and doing, doing all that, so, yeah, I've, in fact, I hired my wife to help input the information in terms of all the, the students, but I couldn't pay her because that was a nepotism issue, so she volunteered for three summers, so, yeah. But we, I mean, it's gotten much better, you know, in terms of that, it's just the one to begin is the GIS or whatever they want to use to be able to track the buses.
Yeah. Phil, we know, it's been a while since we've ever got another company to respond to the bid for this, right?
Well, Salter's been doing that, I think, for like 40 years. I think last time you had one bidder.
Yeah.
And before that, I, I don't know. The problem is, is that, you know, Beacon has bought a lot of the companies, and they already told us that they're all going to have one of their companies bid, so they're not going to have NRT and Salter both would have bid it because they're both owned by Beacon. So the question is, who else is out there?
Yeah.
And that is the issue with bus transportation across the entire state, that you're not, in the country, you're not getting a whole lot of bidders. You know, a big chunk of the country uses First Student, I mean, their First Student is a behemoth in the Midwest.
Yeah.
So, so Beacon sort of, from my perspective, sort of trying to turn itself into the First Student of New England right now, so.
Yeah.
There's just not a whole lot of companies left out there that are independent because it's very expensive business to be in, and they all got hammered during COVID. That's what really drove a lot of them out of business. Anything else?
Can we have any other questions?
Just the timetable on the grant for the electric buses, and would that replace the whole fleet?
No, this is, I think, specifically for two.
Just two?
Yeah.
And best case scenario, like, if that was granted, when would that go into effect?
The lead time on the electric buses, I think, are under a year. Lead time, based on the meeting we had back in December, for diesel buses right now is already what, 18 months? So it, it is a long lead time to get new buses, which again is why the longer the contract that you put out there, hopefully the better the pricing is, because now the company's going to be sure that their capital expense, they're making it for five years instead of for three, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else? Because I was way too old for one in my bar.
Thank you, Phil. All right, that was, wasn't that one of the MASC resolutions about the?
Yes.
Bidding on the?
Which we disapproved.
Yeah, so that is definitely an issue. Okay, moving on to subcommittee updates, we'll start with FinCom, Mr. Callahan?
We have not met, we meet on the 15th.
Okay, so that's next week, and then we have the vacation week, and then we have our next meeting. Is that?
Correct.
How it works? Okay, thank you. And policy, Ms. Walker, you've got some work to do.
Yeah, so this is.
Yeah, so this is first reading of Section J, which the policy committee, subcommittee met in January to review this, basically the final version that we had also worked on last year with our representative from MASC, and appreciated the new subcommittee members' input, Ms. Shaw and Ms. Higgins, very helpful. And some, so there will probably be a few additional Section J items that we'll bring forward, but we got most of it done. We pulled a few out for the purpose of just clarifying some things. So to just expedite the first reading, I'm not going to spend a ton of time, but if people have questions or want to hold anything, that's what your job is tonight, because we will pull those off for second reading if there's a major change or a major question. And?
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
So if we have a question, or would you rather we just pull it than have a discussion?
No, I think if it's a minor change or revision, then we can, we can incorporate in the, in the second reading, that's great. If it's something that's like a major, like something we had to get staff input on or something, we might want to consider holding it.
Got it, thank you.
But either way, just bring it up as we go through. Okay, so starting with Section J, or item JB, equal educational opportunities, this was an update to match the MASC version, particularly to include protected classes and reword the first paragraph. We also removed the legal quote, which is not needed. JBB, educational equity, this is a new policy in the MASC reference manual, so it would be new to us, we would be adding it. And the difference between JB and JBB is that JB addresses equal access, I'm sorry, JB addresses equal access, JBB addresses equity and meeting the needs of individual students. So similar, but slightly different. JEB, entrance age, we just updated the title and the date reference. JF, school admissions, just added a cross-reference. JFABC, the admission of transfer students. So the new report version of this policy is much more detailed than the MASC version, did not really seem to match what the intention of the, of the policy in the MASC version, so we're recommending just getting rid of that one and using the MASC policy, which specifically addresses transfers from charter schools, which I think was the reason for this, to be part of the policy manual. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on that. JFBB, is school choice, updated the list of protected classes, also similar to the changes to the JB. JH, student absences and excuses, the new report version had a lot of information that really falls under procedural, and we're trying, in this process of auditing the policies, to remove anything that's more procedural and would best be incorporated into handbooks. We do have staff, Ms. Keely and the superintendent sitting in on these meetings and are taking good track of, are giving us good guidance on what is in handbooks or what is appropriate to be in handbooks or other policy procedural manuals, so that's helpful. We also added incorporated, or the MASC version incorporates language about dropout prevention, so we're recommending replacing the whole policy.
I have a question there, with the, the highlighted note at the bottom?
Yes.
Is that?
That's just for explanation.
So is that new language that'll be added to the policy?
No, that's just a, like, background.
Just for us?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Related to like what Desi, thank you for bringing that up, I forgot that was in there. Yeah, it was just more to, you know, talk about what Desi's requirements are that are pertinent to this.
Because it also talks about having more detailed information in the student handbook.
Correct, so this, yeah, this summarizes what would be appropriate to include in a handbook.
Great, thank you.
Versus the policy. JIC, student publications is a new policy, per, per MASC. JICF, gang activity in secret societies is also a new policy. JICFA, prohibition of hazing, updated the title. JICFB, bullying prevention, the MASC version has been updated more recently than the new report version, so we had more, we added more information on reporting investigation procedures. JICH, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited, incorporated some additional information on verbal screening from the MASC version and updated the cross-references.
I have a question about this one, and, you know, maybe this is something that goes in the handbook, but I noticed there's nothing in here about the use of breathalyzers, and I'm remembering we received an email from a parent, I want to say last fall, you're nodding, right? She had some concerns?
Yeah, that's in that.
About, about the use of breathalyzers at dances and events at the high school. I'm not sure, so I don't know if we want to pull this and check with Mr. Wolf, or if, you know, where that fits in, because I notice it's not here, so.
That's in the, it's in the student handbook?
It's in the handbook?
Yeah, the breathalyzer policies.
Yeah, and we do review the handbook every year.
Take a vote on it, yeah.
Okay, so maybe then there's nothing that needs to be done.
I'm happy, I wouldn't recommend pulling it out, but we can clarify that for next, for second reading, we can clarify where the, where the, you know, guidance on breathalyzers is, and then you can have that for your consideration when we do second reading.
All right, that sounds good. Great, thank you.
JIK is harassment of students, it's a new policy in the MASC reference manual, specifically addresses harassment of students. This was one that we were, I think, recommended by legal counsel to include, or at least anything related to harassment, try to be as up to date as we can. JIH, searches and interrogations, policies match, but we just had to update the wording and the legal reference. JII, student complaints and grievances, additional cross-reference. JJ, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. We are trying to avoid quoting from regulations, so we're updating it to basically remove that quote from regulations and match the MASC version. JJA, student organizations, has additional cross-reference. JJH, student late night or overnight travel, this is one we frequently see, just added a cross-reference. Is that JJIB, inter-scholastic athletics, additional cross-reference and wording change. JK, student conduct, we updated the title. JKA, corporal punishment, this got included in the JKAA, so there's no need to have a separate policy on corporal punishment. JKAA, physical restraint of students, we have similar policies here, except we just had to add in the corporal punishment. JL, student welfare, additional cross-reference added. JLA, student insurance program, recommend deleting because it's no longer really necessary. JLC, school health program, student health services and requirements, updated some references to family members. Instead of your neighbor, wow, that really?
Isn't that odd?
Very odd. JLC, a physical examination of students, we, there, there was some additional language about the role of the school physician, so it was just clarified. I don't think it's a significant change from what I remember. JLCB, immunization of students, updated the title. JLCC, communicable diseases, updated the wording. JLD, administering medication to students, additional legal reference. JLD, guidance program, suggested removing. And JP, student gifts and solicitations, this policy was also removed from MASC reference manual, similar to JLD, so recommend removing. And then student records, remove the date reference for JRA. Did I go over anything too fast, or does anyone want to revisit anything? Okay, so we're going to take another look at, which one was it?
J.
JICH. Great, thank you. But we'll, just to clarify the breathalyzer.
Thank you.
Okay, and if, in, if there are any other issues that people want to raise between now and second reading, or any additional information, you're certainly welcome to reach out. At second reading, we can make minor revisions, but we should, don't want to change the whole policy, you know?
That's fair.
We could potentially do that. So I think, we don't have to take a vote on this for first reading, so I can just also say where we are with the rest. K, was it H I J K? K and L are pretty short, so we'll probably review this on next, at next meeting, although we have some other things that we also might want to review next meeting, so we'll figure out whether we're ready to bring the final two sections forward to the school committee for a first reading in February, or whether we'll have to wait till March, and I can coordinate with the vice chair as well.
That sounds good.
And then there are a number of items that are just on our hold list that we'll start on once we finish the audit, so. All of the updated policies, as I've mentioned before, are on the webpage. Unfortunately, they're just a PDF right now, but they are an indexed PDF, so you can, if you open them, you can go to the tab on the side and click on different sections, so you don't have to like, and you can also search the document. So it's the best we can do until we get our webpage updated, which I think we should have in March.
Great.
That's it.
Okay.
I just have one question, is that, Ms. Walker, is that true about the website? Because I was looking for something tonight. And the, right now it says, under almost every section, policies and documents are zero.
Yeah, that's, so if you look at the top of that webpage, that's where the PDF is.
This PDF link for, oh, please see this PDF link, which one is this? The updated thing? Okay.
Yeah, there should, I haven't opened it today, I know Ms. Furlong went and removed all the policies that we?
Changing.
Have updated, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, that PDF has all the policies A through I, not just the ones we changed.
Yeah.
So next up, we have the fundraising advisory committee. Did you just have a meeting yesterday, or?
No.
Was it last week?
Last week.
Okay.
Or two weeks ago?
Well, in any case.
Recently enough. It was with the NEF, and of all the groups, that's, I consider the most transparent because I'm on the NEF and the superintendent's there for all those meetings for allocations and so on. The one thing we had a question about was the building naming rights list, which I forwarded to Ms. Walker that night, and that hasn't been changed in years, meaning no new things have come up or denomination changes or anything like that. And then Carrie O'Donnell said she would send that to all the building principals, so the principals could look at the rooms in case like a room had been subdiv, subdivided or something. Andy Wolfe said he made one change, I've not spoken to Carrie O'Donnell yet about what that may be, but I guess I will speak to her tomorrow, and I'm sure she'll give us the, any changes from the other building principals. And then Ms. Walker brought up a policy, which is why I was looking for that policy. So was that edit? When you guys did FF, did you go over that from Ms. McNulty? No, okay.
No, we, so we have a recommendation from our school attorney related to that policy on naming and some, just some points of clarification. So we held that, we didn't bring it to this full body, full committee.
Right, so are you guys going to go over that maybe after the KL and go to the held documents?
And I think, I think our, our advisory committee should, should look at that?
Yeah.
And make a recommendation, or you can come and make a recommendation to the policy committee. I think it should be a joint discussion that we then referred to.
So we'll go over the language in that thing that basically says who gets to control the naming, naming rights seems so official, but you don't know. So the next meeting is next week, that will be with the athletic director, Kyle Hodson, possibly Kathy Cutter, who knows a ton of how all those things are happening on a regular basis, because I'll definitely have questions for Phil about how the money is held and kind of not managed, accessed, because I think the last time Phil was saying it's really just one giant number, and it's hard to figure out, you know, sport by sport, and so.
You mean in that revolving account?
Yeah, well, no, the, even the, if a coach goes up and says, how much money is in our account for our team, it's not an easy answer. So we'll talk about things like that on the 12th.
Great.
And that's it.
Thank you.
I mean, NEF is the only one that we actually approve the amount of money that comes in, the allocation from them.
Right, yeah.
That's true. Okay, Ms. Walker, did you have a SISL update? Probably haven't met since last time.
We haven't met since the last time, yeah.
Okay, so we can move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. Just a few highlights here, so chronic absenteeism grant, so we were awarded $10,000 for the state to really address chronic absenteeism. And as we had our webinar and as we're looking to develop our plan on, on how we're going to address it, it's good to know that a lot of the, I think we've been actually working on chronic absenteeism, it's been a discussion for school committee for, for a long time, especially around, when I first got here on the calendar, that was a lot of fun with Mr. Callahan.
You're going to have a problem next month.
That's right. But so, listening and to the commissioner, so other ideas, you know, some of the basic aspects of that is rethinking discipline. So as you all know, we're already been in restorative justice, not really punishing students, but utilizing, you know, a lot of behaviors as a learning opportunity, so attendance, we have not been, like, some schools love attendance policy, you miss so many days, you get suspended. That's not our?
That just seems like, doesn't make sense.
That has not been part of that, so restorative justice practices that we've been implementing throughout the district have been very positive. The other aspect from the state is MYCAP, which is my career in academic planning, so that really ties in, especially at the high school level, for the academic post-graduation planning that we're already doing, college and career pathways, so we've been really focusing on those areas. The other aspect of, through the state, to really take a look at is your student support and multi-tiered systems approach, so it's really an SEL. And I think over the years, we've been doing a great job with our SEL programs, PBIS, and a lot of different areas. The other area is the family engagement, and so taking a look at this, just some discussions with the administration and central office, so the family engagement, maybe taking a look at like an academic attendance liaison, that could actually be stipended, where they could actually focus and have the families that are experiencing chronic absenteeism just another layer and a point person. So that's something that we would be exploring. And then part of the state is attendance to make up the instructional time that was lost, and I know at the high school level, middle school, with our CEELs, kind of looking at developing a program for the students that are chronically absent that have missed instructional time, how we can, I guess, address some of that instructional time that they've lost. So that was, I think, two areas for us, taking a look at as we have this grant and try to address it. I think the other piece too is really taking a hard look at the data and breaking down in almost communication and messaging, because some of our families go on vacations sometimes, and as we know, chronic absenteeism is 10% of the school, you know, school year, so it's 18 absences, and breaking down, is this, you know, where we're intervening with the families that need support, or is this communication, you know, that shouldn't go away for a couple weeks during the school year, because that would be 10 days and then someone gets sick and then, you know? So right now, those are the discussions that we're having, we're working on a plan on how we're going to address that and utilize those grant funds, so that's kind of where we're at right now. As we go through the budget, I think process, and then we have our plan on, you know, how we're actually going to develop the programming to address it, then I'll be reporting that out to the school committee.
Can I just ask?
Surely.
So I think that's, that's great that we're pursuing this grant, I think the data will be really helpful, particularly breaking down the reasons and some of the household situations and so forth. And one thing that's relevant to our transportation presentation tonight is, even though overall trends are that more students are being driven to school, it's also one of the reasons, lack of access to public, to school transportation is one of the reasons in a lot of districts for school, for absenteeism. So I think understanding that we're in a district where a lot of kids either have their own vehicle own vehicle or get driven by their parents, but sometimes it would be interesting to know if transportation is one of the reasons, is a factor.
Awesome.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to also make, make a comment to the, the community and our families that, that might be listening that, so this, this grant is actually coming from the state, not because we have to apply for it, but because we're eligible for it. And I think something like 80% of the schools in the state are eligible for this grant. So it's not like, you know, we have a particular problem here, right? Most of the schools do. But it's because Newburyport and all, all of the schools in Newburyport, all four of them have been named as attendance priority schools. So I just want to like name that for their whole community that, you know, our attendance, our chronic absenteeism numbers are so high and have not dropped, have dropped down since COVID, but not to pre-COVID numbers, that, that we're on a list of attendance priority schools. So it's something that like the whole community should be aware of and I think be concerned about because 18 days is a lot of school. You know, I'd really like to see the, the data that you're referring to. It's like as you look closer into the data, if we can get some kind of presentation about, you know, what are we seeing? What are the overall trends? I don't, I don't know because I haven't seen the data, but I don't think it's as a result of vacations, right? Like I've heard that from families, you know, oh, you know, I, we need to spend more family time. If we're going to take a vacation, I'm fine taking a vacation. Fine, I'm not, you know, judging families that do that, but that's, you know, five days out of school, not 18. 18 is a lot of days. And so like what is causing that? And, and do families know, right? Like when their students miss a couple of days of school a month and they don't realize that they're building up and by February they're already at 14 or something like that, right? Like do they, are they getting that communication so that they actually realize it? So I just think it's a, I just wanted to make that comment because it's a reciprocal, not reciprocal, collaborative relationship really. Like this isn't just a district thing. It's something that the families need to know as well, that this is, this is a problem and is a very clear trend with academic outcomes as well between students who are chronically absent and students who are not. And, you know, that's very obvious, but when you look at the data, it's, well, yeah, you're not learning as much because you're not in school. You missed so many days of school that you're, you're constantly feeling like you have to catch up, right? And you're, and you're behind on whatever the content is and your academic outcomes are going to suffer because of that. So I just think that's something that everybody kind of needs to be aware of so that the whole community can get behind, you know, going to school is the norm, right? Like we need to make that the norm.
And, and I would agree. I think pre-COVID attendance from 2022, 23, we've made significant gains from that. And the high school was, it's one school that was on, on the priority list. So they made the gain, yeah. So although our attendance is each year is getting better, we didn't hit the, you know, the bar that the state has set. So it's, but I agree 100%. This is, I think, a focus and to break down the data even further. But I really like utilizing an attendance liaison that would be the point person, you know, for families. So, yeah. So that's where we're at with the attendance.
Can I just say, I think that my sense of things, I'd be curious what the results will be, that there's a high percentage or higher percentage of kids with mental health issues that the attendance is really a big piece of it and, and what that's like for families, you know, knowing that kids need to be in school, but because certain things, their childhood experience is making it difficult for them to be there.
I agree 100%. We've seen a rise in, you know, just like society, but a rise in anxiety, a rise in depression, school phobia, those aspects.
And parents' mental health issues as well.
Yeah.
Some kids stay home to care for their parents.
100%.
Do you feel like this will be helpful? I mean, those distinctions must be hard to make, meaning it's hard to tell a kid that missed a week because of COVID and then a week because of vacation, that's already 14 days versus somebody that's struggling and can't go to school.
Yeah, so, so as part, this would just be another layer of working with those families. So just, you know, credit our adjustment counselors, administrative teams. They have weekly meetings and working with the families. You know, the, the first aspect when, when, you know, you're looking at a student and if they begin to struggle is you look at the attendance right away. So all of a sudden, if you had a student that didn't have attendance issues and within a two or three week period, all of a sudden they're absent six, seven times, you know, you know, is that, you know, so those are the red flags that we monitor throughout. And it could be, you know, the flu or, or something like that. You know, so all absences are recorded regardless if they're excused or not. So versus a student that all of a sudden, you know, the adjustment counselor is finding out that this, the home situation, that the reason why the student's not coming to school. So that's a different type of intervention versus, you know, students that are really sick or strep throat, they're out for a couple of weeks. So part of the state's process is to really, I think, to make up that instructional time. So instead of, so even if we just take a student that may have had the flu for a couple of weeks that, you know, went over, allowing us to utilize this funds to set up programs so they can get caught up in the instructional time. So for that group of students, you might be utilizing a program versus another group of students, you have the attendance liaison that's now meeting with our social workers, adjustment counselors. That's like, hey, we need to bring a team here to work with this student and the family. So I think it's just different approaches which will allow us to bring, you know, the students back in school. And then I also think it is part of the accountability for schools is, you know, attendance. And I'm not saying like we're all going on these vacations, but I do think attendance for, for parents, especially at the elementary level, it's, it needs to be, as you said, Dr. Higgins, a priority and them understanding like this is a part of the accountability. So even as a parent, if you are, you know, I'm keeping my child home, they're sick or, you know, we want a vacation or whatever that is, those absences add up and the state just sees it as all absences regardless if they're excused, non-excused. It's just, that's the accountability piece. So I think communication of that piece is important too.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some obviously really tough issues that a lot of students are facing, but there's also, you know, another side where just everyone has heard for the last few years, if you're sick, stay home.
Right.
We've heard that for so many years now. And it's sort of like, and you know, I've heard this from, you know, doctors and such that it's time to sort of flip the narrative a little bit because there's, you know, particularly kids, you know, younger kids that, you know, their, their rhino noses are going, they cough, they don't like use a tissue, like all those, right? And then families see, oh, my child has a cold, they have to stay home. It's like, no, school has tissues, you know, send them, right? Like colds go around, it's going to happen. You know, I know that that's like difficult now, but it's like that's, that's been this norm of like, my kid's sick, stay home. But it's, kids are going to get colds too. You have to send them back to school. And that's, that's just a different, you know, philosophy that we haven't been used to in a little while. And so I don't know how much of that's accounting for it, but you know, I think as a, as a state and national trend, that, that is one thing that particularly plagues like the elementary schools, I think.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just some, I just think some great community things that were going on. We work with the Human Rights Commission. We sponsored their annual human rights Holocaust Remembrance Event. I think a lot of us were there that night. Just want to credit Rabbi Alex Matthews, who led the program. We utilize, we have a great partnership since I've been in Newburyport with the HRC. It's been a great community group, assists us with a lot of different areas. So we have a great partnership and we offered the NOC, wonderful event. So this year was Margaret McLean spoke about her book, Orange in the Winter. So the idea of this, we had Jen Groskin had her Clipper crew. So eight eighth grade students that wanted to reach out to the senior center here and work with the seniors. And they came up with this idea back in October of developing a, a book group. So one of the, the students chose this book because of Margaret. She's a local author that wrote this book, Orange in the Winter, which is the beginning of the Holocaust as seen through the eyes of a child. So we had eighth grade students coming up, working with our seniors, doing a book group. And then the dialogue, it, it was a lot of positives. I could talk forever, but you have two generations talking, really inspired our students where they're listening to the seniors with all these real life experiences. And then the seniors also, you know, felt good working, you know, with, with these students. So that night, we were highlighting student voice. So Ms. Groskin and four of the eight eighth graders were up on stage with the senior citizens, present their book group and what they learned in the discussion. It was such a successful program that they're going to continue and they're going to be selecting a new book to read in the spring. As part of that wonderful night, Ms. Zabo and some of the students you heard at the poetry, the poetry soup class, read original poems geared to the Holocaust Remembrance Day. So it was a wonderful event, once again, for the entire community. You're a HRC member, if you wanted to talk about it?
Yeah, I, I'm always impressed when the students, you know, particularly, well, the middle school students were great, but I got to say those high school poetry students, I mean, every time they present, I'm just really struck how powerful and profound and just, it's just amazing. So it's, it was great to see, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. It's just an awesome community event. And, and I think that's part of, when we're looking at community partnerships, I think, you know, we're on to something. We're bridging these generations together with a lot of, you know, our seniors is going to be a great thing.
I'll add that my mother was one of those seniors. Did you know that? She enjoyed it so much, she can't wait for the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the students loved it just as much. They were, they, they want to continue with the partnership. So I think it's something we'll look to expand. So some really positive work that's coming out of the different communities. Last week I had the opportunity, I, I did put it in my little memo to everybody, but I just want to credit some of our teachers, but I had the opportunity to visit some classrooms and it was asked, asked to participate in some of the activities. So just a little background on the middle school and eighth grade English. For the past four years, our ELA teachers, Erica Ontos and Eric, what's?
Shilga.
Shilga, that's right. Eric Shilga, I always mess his name up. Have partnered with the acting, acting companies to bring Shakespeare to life. NEF generously funds the artists and resident actors who come into the classroom and they act out scenes to help the students develop their monologues. This year, to help our students, the teachers asked other adults in the building and other teachers and administrators to be part of that lesson. So we were invited to memorize and perform a scene from Romeo and Juliet. So many of the staff participated throughout the last couple of weeks. So Ms. Furlong and I were asked to perform our scene last week. Best part of the class was at the end when the students.
Retired right now, if you want to.
What was the scene? I want to know. I have that play memorized, by the way.
It's well worth watching.
It was recorded.
It was? I was going to ask if you took any photos.
I think it was, yeah. There was some photos, yes.
Photos, videos.
We, yeah, we had a little fun there, but.
Was it the death scene or what was it?
No, it was when, when Romeo has the night out and then he's, comes in and he gets his, you know, the, his.
Friar Lawrence.
Yeah, Friar Lawrence.
Oh.
It's like, hey, where were you? I thought he was with Rosaline, but he wasn't. Juliet. So that was, you see I'm getting all nervous? In front of all eight graders, you know? The best part of that though, we had the question, right? So we, it's, so we were out of our element.
You had a costume too, right?
Yeah, so as we're, you know, we're preparing in front of a bunch of eighth graders, which is already nerve wracking. So I'm like, I'm kind of nervous. And I, that morning and Ms. Furlong, she's like, oh, you know, I'm a little nervous too, whatever. And I was like, yeah, we'll be all right. So because I was nervous, she had this bright idea to go get costumes. So her, her costume was actually fit. It was like part of the role. And then she gives me a couple of costumes. And I think, you know, I was like, should I wear this? Like, oh yeah, you look just like Romeo. So if you look at the picture, I think they set me up because as I was walking down the NOC, I think every kid was laughing at me. And I'm like, do I not look?
Well, Romeo does have unique, a unique outfit.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we.
Like Leo from?
I don't know. It's in the, you could, the superintendent memo, they sent it out, so it's.
Do you have a picture of the real Romeo for reference?
I was like, I was like the, the old retired Romeo.
Oh.
The question is, did it involve tights?
Kind of.
Yes?
Yeah, it was kind of. They found these pants.
My daughter came home that day saying that you should start doing class visits with Superintendent Gallagher, but I didn't know why.
Oh, really? I think one of them on my way out said, don't give up your day job. But all kidding aside, we had a lot of fun, but what was, I think, really neat about it and kind of what, when we had the dialogue with the students. So I think it was a great way for the faculty, for, for ourselves, myself as superintendent, to show the students coming out of your comfort zone, trying something you never. So we all get anxious, you know, we all make, you know, make mistakes. We're all a little bit embarrassed, but I think the message was, you know, take risks and, and all of that. And so the, the embarrassment and, you know, the, the kids laughing at me a little bit. But so the teacher emailed us after and said, this is the first time that she had all of her students recite a monologue. And I think that is because I think the students saw us coming out of our comfort zone. So it's, so my embarrassment, that's what I'm hanging out past, but she could have just had a great class, they all did their work. But no, so that was, that was just a great thing. And I just want to thank the teachers and all of the staff. So it wasn't just me. Ms. Furlong, Mr. Marcos was involved. It was, it was just a really neat, neat thing for the past couple of weeks. So it was a great lesson. And then on that, I was also invited to an English lesson to Megan Lemee's class. And they were doing argumentative essays for and against chocolate milk. Right up my alley.
That's a real thing.
Yeah, well, they did their.
In the school cafeteria.
Yes. They did their research, their pros, cons, you know, why we need it, why we don't. So I was really, really impressed with that too. So.
Absolutely.
That was great.
I used to have a chocolate milk after every bar class. Yeah, I still do. B A R R E. I'm a big chocolate milk guy.
Exercise.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's good. I brought up strawberry milk. So anyways, it was a great week. The teachers are amazing. I really appreciate them inviting me to their classes, to participate, to see, see a lot of great, great teaching going on. All right. And then last but not least, we had our Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Winter Conference. So the conference was really around, and I added this in the superintendent memo, but really navigating the, the political lands of today. The description, district leaders of focus with unprecedented challenges at the national and local politics, along with union activism, along with social media, you know, and personal, you know, attacks and all of that. So the conference was the superintendents having some keynote speakers on how to effectively communicate with a lot of misinformation sometimes that's being presented on social media. And they gave us some time to kind of collaboratively work together and problem solve and share our experiences. So I just think that many districts are experiencing similar issues, especially with social media, you know, bashing unfortunate personal attacks, school personnel at the national and local level. And so I think for superintendents, it's becoming unprecedented and it's driving as well, driving a lot of quality educators out of the business. And it's kind of developing strategies on how do you protect the teaching. out of the business. And it's kind of developing strategies on how do you protect the teaching staff? You know, when you're a superintendent or a principal, you, you are subject to a lot of public scrutiny. But what, what we're starting to see now is, is it's happening to teachers at the classroom level. So some of these newer teachers are coming into the business and then, you know, being portrayed on social media and they're, you know, we're, we're losing some really quality, quality people. So it's not just, you know, Massachusetts thing, it's kind of a national thing that, you know, we're all gonna try to figure out some ways of, you know, working with this, this generation. Because that's where the teacher shortages are happening. And a lot of us, as we start moving on and retire, that group of educators underneath in public education, it's not gonna be there. So that's why we really, it's a, kind of a crisis for the superintendents. But this was great, this was a great conference. We had some keynote speakers that really provided a lot of insight. And then a lot of regional superintendents after this, we're meeting, North Shore superintendents are meeting and trying to develop some strategies on how to support, especially our newer teachers coming into the, the field, and then how to, you know, work with some misinformation that gets put out there. So that's all I have. That's my superintendent. I will not be acting tonight, so.
Car wheels?
My agent told me I shouldn't act, so.
Okay.
No car wheels either, not tonight. So there you go.
All right. We'll move on to new business. Mayor, I know you had something.
I have a couple of things. If somebody else has something, though, they could go first, if anyone.
Not, not new business. Could I just reiterate something in the, in the report? I'm, I'm just really glad to hear that, that there's some cohesion amongst leaders throughout the Commonwealth. And it's, I think there's opportunities here to learn as we support other communities that are going through struggles, you know, without opening a can of worms and talking about, you know, as much as we can learn to stay cohesive going forward and support teachers and administration and learn from what other districts are going through. I think if we can stay ahead of that, that's, that's wonderful. And support what's going on in Newton and other places.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one thing.
Sure.
I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. We'll start having the Whittier reps come in monthly to do an update. So we're gonna schedule that for the, our, like the second meeting, the last meeting of each month. So it'll, it should fall the week after they've had their monthly meeting, so that if there's any news, they can bring us that news. So my intention is to invite them both and then they can work out between the two of them if it, you know, if they want to switch off or whatever. But that way, you know, no one can say we didn't ask if we have them on the agenda monthly. So any questions or thoughts about that?
I would just say, I think that second meeting's probably, you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, it's kind of gonna be, they're not a subcommittee, of course, but it'll be in that area, right? Hey, any news for us?
Well, I was gonna put them probably like right after the, the student rep report, so it would be kind of near the top.
Okay, so they can leave.
Yeah, rather than, does that make sense to people?
I would have put them after new business.
Really? Okay, well.
No, I think even the beginning.
I'm thinking after student rep report, but.
DVD.
Sure. Any other thoughts or feedback on that?
Yeah, no, my only thought, I don't know if monthly is, I mean, for now, I think monthly is important, but going forward, we might not need monthly.
Sure, well, we'll see how it evolves, but that, for now.
I was just gonna say on that, I, I think the second meet, our second meeting a month is a good time. They only meet once a month.
Right.
So I think that should work out where they would have just met.
The week before, that's what it looks like.
That would be, I think that would be good.
So then we can capture any news that they, that they have.
True.
And I'm happy to reach out to them unless you would rather do that?
No, you can do that.
Okay, that was it.
And just two more things on Whittier. I did post for the, for, for the seat currently occupied by former Mayor Donna Holliday. She's up at the end of March. I just thought, I was putting out a press release around boards and commissions anyway, so I got that out there. So we actually already have two people who have shown interest. So I think we will have, especially after all of this, a lot more interest in those seats moving forward. So that's been posted. And I just wanted to tell everyone, tomorrow I'm going to a meeting with Superintendent Maureen Lynch at Whittier with the other 10 communities. It's kind of a closed door meeting. I think a few of the communities had asked for a more public meeting, but I think she wanted to invite us in and, and, and talk about possible next steps or where everyone was at. So I'll be, are we very interested to see how that meeting goes. Their next meeting is February 13th. And so I, I think I'm gonna ask, as part of that, for the communities to be part of a, more of a discussion at their meeting, a more open discussion around, around next steps or where we're at. So we'll, we'll see where that goes, I'll let you guys know. But anyone who wants to check out their February 13th meeting, though, that'll be their first time meeting since, since the vote. But I have been meeting, I have been speaking with all the other communities so far, and I have to circle back and, and hit a lot of the select boards and city councils. But there definitely seems to be a lot of consensus around revisiting the regional agreement. So I'm gonna propose forming a Whittier Task Force tomorrow. It's gonna be made up of local officials from each of the communities, at least two members from each community. And we, we already have some, some legal looking at this as far as what new report would be looking for and any kind of amendments to the Whittier Agreement. But we're gonna, that conversation has started in most of the other communities as well. So I'll keep you guys up to date with that. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up, any questions on Whittier, I guess?
Yeah, on the, on the consideration of the appointment of the school committee member. I just want to make sure that we have time on, when we do that vote, we get, we get all the information in advance and don't feel rushed in making that decision. I think that this is gonna be a particularly kind of poignant appointment.
Sure.
And I think, you know, we may have, we may want to ask questions and, you know, just, just making sure that we have time on the agenda and that the candidates that put their names forward understand that they're gonna be, you know, basically interviewed. So just, that's all. Just giving a, a heads up that, that there's preparation, that, that sort of.
And we've done this, we have so much time now that we actually could really set that up any way we want. We really don't have to do it how we've done it in the past, too, especially if we have maybe more people that.
Could even be a special meeting.
It could be a special meeting, or it could be two, it could be over two meetings, potentially. I'll leave it to you guys to think that through.
If we have enough, maybe we could screen everybody in the first meeting and then invite two people back or something, we could do that.
So what is, Ms. Holliday's thing is, March 31st is up?
End of March. So she has like two meetings.
So we have to have final resumes in before X and then schedule those two meetings in February and March. So we can do it.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll put something out for the mayor's office for like final, final call for resumes. But like I said, we've already got two people that have, that have submitted.
Can you have them copy the school committee, like the one that we got today, not just to the mayor's office?
Sure.
So that we see it?
I mean, anyone I get that aren't copied on it, I will send to the.
Or once they're all in.
Well, I only have the one, that's why I asked.
I just know of someone who hasn't sent it in yet, but who has, has an interest.
Okay. So whatever that scheduling is, it has to be scheduled pretty quickly.
If we wanted, well, if we wanted to do the two meeting thing, couldn't we potentially use the two March meetings?
That's what I mean, yeah.
Because they won't.
Right, but that only get, I'm just saying, that only gives people three weeks to send in their resumes, basically. If we do that in the two March meetings, they're like, well, it's already what, what is today, the 5th?
Yeah, I mean, that's like a month from now, that seems reasonable, I mean.
But we have to put that out. You only have a month to get your stuff to us.
Right, did you post it with a deadline?
I didn't, because it was so early.
Could add it.
But I can certainly, certainly do that. I'm not.
Yeah, because in previous years, you know, we got the resume and then one day they showed up and.
Yeah, because it just, there has to be a reason.
Because it was just one person, right. But I mean, if we made it like, like a week before the meeting or something, and they'd definitely be in the packet, but if people wanted resumes earlier than that, we could, we could manage that. And then we could have the, whatever that date is, the first meeting in March, to have everyone in. And like you said, then maybe we have some discussion, we'd have to figure out how that works as far as what needs to be public, what could be offline. But, you know, we could have two finalists return and then set up kind of like we did the last time.
Do you want to make that determination based on how many resumes we get?
Definitely, yes.
Say if we only get two or three.
Yeah.
Say if it's over three, we do this double process, double meeting.
Yeah, well, why don't we plan on, on meeting that, what is the first?
The 4th and the 18th are our two meetings.
Okay, so let's definitely plan on meeting on this on the 4th. And like you said, if it's just two or three people, maybe we get it done that night. But if it's a larger pool, then that gives us another meeting to, to finish the process. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure. Or we could interview them on the 4th if it is only two, and then just take a vote on it the 18th.
It may be that that would be a good way to do it, just as a default. And then it doesn't matter how many we get. Because we could, yeah, we could win it down or vote on the 18th. I mean, sorry. We could either do it, like hear from them all and the, regardless, hear from everybody and then decide if we want to, you know, nominate two to come forward for the 18th versus voting on all of them.
Yeah, that could work. I mean, because that time could also be time if we want to. I mean, in, in a normal interview process, you might be checking references or, you know, like doing that extra kind of background information, but, yeah.
I do think as part of the, like, review of the agreement process, too, like, the charge of the school committee will definitely be something that we take up as well. I know I didn't like some of the things I heard from, from different people. So I think all the communities are kind of concerned with that.
I mean, they should have to run for the job.
That, or just, you know, that you are, you know, you should be listening to your, you are appointed, not elected. So if you are appointed, you should be listening to the communities that you represent, I would say.
Mayor, do you know if the, all the committees, communities have representation now? Because I know Georgetown didn't, they had, they were down one.
I don't, I don't know. I know that they were full, there was a full vote, though, 14, so they must have, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, that's good. I think we've got that.
Is that it for Whittier? Any other questions, Whittier? And just the other thing I was gonna mention, so I, I didn't put communications subcommittee on the agenda tonight, because I just, I just didn't think we were in there yet. So I don't know, we did have three people who are interested. And I just don't know enough of what it looks like. So especially when you're talking about who's gonna chair that and, and what would that look like? And I guess I can tell you who was interested. We had Juliet, Sarah and Andy that were interested in it. And so I did ask, ask committee member Boger about chairing, but I couldn't tell, because I don't know what it looks like yet. So I don't know, we want to have, no, we don't have to do it tonight, I guess, or we could. But I don't, I don't know what that looks like yet. So I couldn't tell him exactly what it would look like to chair, because I don't exactly know the charge of the committee, I guess, yet.
Yeah, I mean, the, the charge was pretty broad when we voted last time at the last meeting. So I, I think if, if Mr. Boger is willing to chair, I think it's just a matter of sort of deciding as a subcommittee, how often we, I mean, I think that's, that could be a, a group decision, particularly as this is a one-year sort of trial.
Right.
I think it, I don't think there's, I think the charge is pretty broad and it could be that the subcommittee kind of determines the focus for the first year.
Yeah, the conversation was more of a, in deference to the experience on the committee. I wasn't entirely ready to, I appreciated the mayor suggesting that, but I assumed or presumed that.
Somebody else would do it?
Yeah.
But I do think it's unique, as, as Julia just mentioned, like, I don't think we know what the committee is yet. So it might just be you three getting together.
Yeah, a chair is, a chair's role can just be scheduling the meeting and taking the minutes.
Facilitating and, you know.
Why don't we plan on having a meeting and then we can talk it through?
Great. So do you want to like take a, like a vote maybe next time on it, if you want to make it an official for a year or you don't?
Well, we already did make it that.
Yeah, the charge, the charge is pretty, like, it's pretty, like I said, it's pretty broad and it was sort of to, to report back, you know, to have it run for, till the end of the year. And we would decide as a group whether or not to keep it going beyond that.
Okay. Well, I'll leave that up to you three, then.
It, it is great brainchild in, in lieu of communication issues in other communities in reference to education. So the more communication, the better with the community. So it's a great brainchild.
Oh, no, I think it's a great idea. I just, I couldn't articulate, like, this is what it's gonna look like as US Chair, because I didn't know exactly.
Yeah, and it really, I mean.
Little bit of a work in progress.
Every chair has their own character, right, Mr. Callenhead?
I don't know what you mean. Sarah became vice chair her first time on the school committee.
Has character or is a character?
Is a character.
Is a character.
Yeah, it's mainly just scheduling the meeting.
So yeah, let's just meet then and talk it through and then we can report back.
Sounds great.
Yeah, that sounds good. Did we have any other new business?
I just have, just one regarding our policy on IC, ICA, school year calendar. So if you all recall, in years when Labor Day falls between September 1st and the 4th, schools start after Labor Day, just wanted to.
Recall that.
Yeah. So I don't think there needs to be a vote on that, it's just.
Except when you're thwarted by the contract.
What's that? I, we already let the.
That's the challenge, yeah.
We let our union know, because there's, I think in the contract, it's by February 28th, if we're starting before or after. But the language is so clear now that it's obviously gonna be starting after September 2nd is Labor Day.
So we won't have the issue we had last year.
Correct.
It is, yeah. I've actually already had people say, ask, once it's starting, I'm like, put your kid in camp and figure it out.
I did say the policy.
Yeah. No, I talked about that, too, but these people I know, I'm like, put him in camp, it'll be fine.
It is a hot button issue, so in terms of communication, it is worth.
Oh, I know.
Get it out there.
You should go back and look at the other, the last U. D. meeting.
We hear plenty about it.
So are you suggesting there's something there that needs to be amended or?
No, I just want it under new business, yeah, that we're gonna be starting after Labor Day, because Labor Day falls on the 2nd.
So the Tuesday after?
No.
We probably will have that scheduled.
The Thursday after.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah, we should do the calendar.
That's, that's the problem.
Calendar.
So the issue's not been, the issue has not been fixed until the contract is reopened.
Correct.
We negotiate next.
Write that down for next year.
Next spring, spring of 2025, yeah.
You have some ideas on P-Day, too.
But we'll, we'll vote on the calendar, like, next meeting or, or next couple of meetings?
I think that's coming up.
We start that, yeah, we do the draft in, in March. And then usually by the end of March, we usually have the calendar, right?
Yeah, I think we might have it on the idealist for the 27th for first draft. It's either that or March 4.
Yeah.
And then the 18th.
It's definitely coming up, because we were kind of planning ahead, some of those things coming up.
I think sooner the better.
Yeah.
So we can stop getting emails.
Very similar to this year's calendar.
All right, anything else? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.